We're calling to order the January 22 Auburn Select Board meeting. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join the meeting via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the postage agenda. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else in the audience that is also recording? Seeing none, we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I call upon the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in its laws.
So we will start with public comment. I would like to note, as per our last meeting, we have a second public comment that is available at the end, before the end of the meeting. There is a sign up sheet in the back if you would like to make a public comment at that time. And as a reminder, the public comments are for a three minute period. Is this the first one? Let me grab it. Oh, no, she's got it back. Let me grab it. Sorry. So it looks like the first person signed up for public comment is Maureen Dubois. Would you like to come up, Maureen? Hi. Could you state your name and your address for the record?
15 and 19 Southbridge Street. This is an offering that is totally 20, but I'll be brief.
Okay.
Maybe we can do this again another time.
Certainly, yes, thank you.
As I mentioned at a previous meeting, conditions down there at Southbridge Street, mainly the Pola complex, have gotten out of control. Pola has outgrown that facility. Eighteen wheelers, big box trucks have taken over the entire area down there. You have eighteen wheelers going up and down Jerome Ave in Elmwood. They block my driveway. They cause property damage to people. They damage the roads. Like I said, I've got 20 minutes that you obviously don't have time for, but it's a serious problem with the things that need to be done down there. And like I said, this is probably going to take all the powers that be, Pola, the railroad, the DOT, the town, you name it, everybody's going to have to get involved to really start doing something and paying attention to the dangerousness down there.
Thank you for your comment. Did you want to share that paper with us? Oh, we'd be happy to take it, and we can look into it. Okay. Thank you so much.
I just want to let you know, I've been vocal about this area for quite some time, and I've had people come to me from the entire area, both sides of the track. You know, it's just, it's just gotten ridiculous. It's really, really gotten ridiculous. And the number of trucks that got stuck on those railroad tracks down there, and it's just, people need to pay attention.
Okay. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. Our second public comment is Maureen Goodrich. If you would like to come up and state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Maureen Goodrich, 5 Lowell and Brook Drive. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So I've been following your meetings at home like I always do, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about public comment and then comment about agenda items. So I thought I would come and share my thoughts with you on that. And regarding the public comment, I truly feel that it should just be just that, public comment where somebody comes up here, they bring something to your attention, and there's no back and forth, because then it becomes an agenda item. And there could be something that now you have a back and forth with, that I'm sitting at home and I may want to comment, but didn't know it was an agenda item because it's public comment. So you do a fabulous job, you know, having people just bring things to your attention, but sometimes it does become a back and forth. And I've also been following Mr. Cappentus' member items on commenting on agenda items. And I know that you agreed last time, because it was longstanding in your, in your agenda to have a second public comment, but my concern with only having a second public comment is anybody who may be here to answer those questions, whether it's, you know, the fire chief or a fire department issue or DDIS to answer that question, they may have already left, and now you can't get that answer, that question to answered. So I fully support having comment on agenda items. I know tonight you have a full house here, probably in anticipation of being able to speak to a certain agenda item, but per your policy, they won't. And so I encourage you to continue the dialogue about having comment on agenda items, but also work, have a set policy on who can speak, how, not who, how long they can speak, how many times they can come up, et cetera, because I really believe that it's helpful to have resident comments. I'm not even going to say public, I'm going to say resident comments when it comes to these agenda items. Sometimes you may have to go a little later in the night, but that's, you know, that's, that shows your true commitment to the residents, so thank you. And thanks for all you're doing. You're all doing a good job.
Thank you so much for your comments. Moving along, we have a public hearing. So we have Blue Line Motors. Is there a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair is yes as well, if you'd like to come up. And could you just give us a refresher on what this is? For also for, you could come here if you prefer.
My name is Herb Campbell. I live in Worcester on Blackthorn Drive. I'm here on behalf of Blue Line Motors. We're petitioning for a Class II motor license at 25 Southbridge Street in Auburn. I've been in front of the council a couple of times, and I believe it was continued for further review and maybe a gathering of some additional information. I'm willing and eager to hear what you might have to say, or if I could respond to anything, that'd be fine with me.
Great. Thank you so much. So this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody that would like to speak or has questions, I encourage you to do so now.
Maureen Dubois, 15 and 19 Southbridge Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling me up. My name is Judy Jazz. I live at 5 Willis Street in Auburn.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Well, some of the questions we have were with regard to the number of parking spaces, given the additional electrical business that is in that spot, that we didn't feel that there's the proper number of parking spaces to conduct this motor vehicle sales. And given the 20-minute paper that I just gave you, it kind of adds a lot to that. And I was under the understanding that the DPW director was supposed to go down there and look at the number of parking spaces, and I don't believe he's done that yet, at least when I last spoke to her.
Sure.
So our DPW director just walked in. I know she provided the board with some information in advance as it related to the painting of the striping of the spaces, which was going to be done after the appeal period was completed. Is that correct, Joanna?
After speaking to Mr. Campbell and the town planner, we determined that it didn't make sense to go over the parking plan as it was marked out until they were ready to actually mark it out permanently, because they were going to have to do it over again before the permanent markings went down.
I guess in response to that, my concern is, moving forward, trying to facilitate the needs of the, of the, of the board and the requirements of DPW, it's difficult for me to stripe, to stripe the lot right now without a clear indication as to whether or not it's approved, or I'm going to be approved for a license. So I'm kind of in a quagmire as to what to do. And in addition, to be honest, there's no way that we could stripe the parking lot in this weather anyway. So I don't know what I could do to move forward other than to say that we will comply with whatever the DPW determines to be an accurate or fair representation of parking and would stripe it accordingly. But I really can't go any further than where I am right now without some indication as to whether or not that I'm approved for a license to actually go forward. I guess I would say, I'm unaware of any, I'm unaware of any restrictions or ordinances or bylaws that have been presented to me for me to address that are obstacles. So without having an obstacle presented to me, it's very difficult to, to anticipate what that might be. So I would just suggest that we will comply with whatever the DPW says are the amount of spaces that are acceptable.
Sure. Thank you. Do board members have any questions? Certainly.
So my understanding of reading the planning board document was, they wanted you, and it's in their decision. So like you, I'm Malcolm, I'm in the middle, because they have a condition that says, DPW is supposed to go out and look at the markings, because there is concern, but there's a lot going on on that site, and there's concern from the residents that you don't have enough width to do what you do. So I know at the board meeting, they did say, you didn't have to stripe it necessarily, but put dots roughly the size of it, and then DPW could come out and take a look at it. So I had asked the question of the DPW director, and she said that you had had a conversation, but there hadn't been any, any concrete decision made as to that being done, so.
She could correct me if I'm wrong. I tried to submit a plan that we had drawn, and she did request that we, we stripe it, not stripe it, but mark it out, but I thought it was after we were approved by the planning board.
Right. So the intent was, after, after Mr. Campbell came to my office and we, you know, and this is not a typical request, so I, I talked to the town planner about it. So it was my understanding that it was, it was my responsibility from the, from the planning board to determine that, you know, to make sure that the parking spaces were the correct size and that we had the correct aisle widths. So once Mr. Campbell came to me with that request, it just, it didn't make sense to, you know, to put down any markings until such time that they were ready to do that, which was going to be at the beginning of December, right?
Beginning of when?
December? Was that the, the next, yeah, the next planning board meeting?
I actually did go out and put chalk in, but we never went forward. I was under the impression that I couldn't move forward until I was approved by the planning board.
So, yeah, so you, you did get the conditional approval, if that's the, right. So you would have the conditional approval, but it was conditioned on making sure that those parking spaces are correct. I mean, at this point, I'm not really sure if it makes sense to have a full survey done to make, to see if, you know, to make sure that this is to scale, and that would definitely expedite the process, but obviously at a cost. So I'm, I'm fine with going, you know, to the site and looking at the parking spaces. It just doesn't, you know, it didn't make sense to, you know, look at, look at, make sure that the parking spaces comply with the regulations when we know that those markings are not going to be used for the final markings.
So the, the site plan that we submitted, what did it?
I'm just saying, you know, it's not, I don't know what had transpired between, you know, at the planning board meeting, and I don't know if that was the, if that was their concern, that the plan was, you know, was more of a sketch than, than a surveyed plan. So.
Not a engineered, so it's not a survey.
Right, no. So that, so I don't know if that was the, that was their original concern, or why they would have me go out to, to make sure those parking spaces were, were correct, or were dimensioned the correct way.
Thank you. I think we had a couple more board questions.
Chair, I think one of the questions I asked was, what is the residence recourse? So they're concerned about traffic on the road, people stopping there, again momentarily, so it's not like they're going to call and get a police officer or response at that time. So if they are noncompliant, even if it's momentarily, what is the recourse for the residents there that have raised this concern, should we approve this license?
I would have to ask the enforcement, either Caleb or the police chief, as to, you know, what options the town would have in terms of a, a noncompliant parking situation.
I just, I just want to make, through the chair, I just want to make one comment. This is an existing property that had previous businesses there in the past. It's somebody that's looking to sell two used cars, and his office is going to be an office that was used by an attorney, that attorney's moved out. I don't believe we're increasing any traffic to the area based on selling two used cars. We did require them to go for site plan, because they were changing the use from the attorney to the used car lot. And the planning board looked at the entire site, and the businesses and the apartments on site, and required him to add parking to accommodate all those uses. So it's, it's just a question of him striping the lot, which he probably doesn't want to spend the money to, to stripe the lot until the board approves his license, which is understandable. So I don't think that there's any nonconforming parking happening, so I wouldn't comment on how to address that.
If I may, the question is the number of parking spaces. Excuse me. There's an electrical company in there that has, on any given day, four to six vehicles parked there. So the property does not have enough parking spaces for the electrical company and the tenants to now add four additional parking spaces, two for inventory, one for the employee, and one for customers that may be coming and going. There aren't enough parking spots there, and the drawing that he submitted is not accurate.
So I believe we have the updated drawing that only has the two inventory slots, and it has tenant parking. It looks like there is additional parking spaces. I would not be able to speak to how many people are parked there in a day, but I do believe we have the most up-to-date drawing.
Here's the chair, if I may.
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Going. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, actually, I just want to, I don't want to sort of re-judicate the planning board decision. That's not a purview, at least I don't think it is, but I just want to, you know, for the, so that the residents here and those watching have the same information that we have. Commissioner Moody, if you can just confirm for me, we have an email from you saying that, you know, you have reviewed the, the parking plan, and that it appears that the approved plan by the planning board meets parking requirements of the Auburn zoning bylaw. Can you just confirm that?
I would agree. That's what I was going to state. I would agree with that. The four spaces are provided, two for each dwelling unit. The square footage of the electrical warehouse has the appropriate parking spaces. The only unknown is the small office for the used car, but I believe he's providing four spaces for the used car dealership as well, which would be more than enough. So based on the information I have, it meets the bylaw.
Thank you. And I believe the, the planning board decision, the way that I read it, was that director, DPW director, is to approve in advance a drawing or the site plan of the, the proposed striping for parking will be reviewed by DPW before final painting to ensure compliance with the approved site plan. So the way I read that is that the petition was going to provide a plan to the DPW commissioner to approve before you go and actually stripe it. Is that not being done, or are you going to do it in the field?
Well, I was under the impression that this plan was, was going to be sent to the DPW in addition to the selectmen, and that that would be under review. I think the only question is with the, the DPW, is the actual striping of the lot? And if they have, I mean, we're not going to stripe it, we're going to hire a professional company that does that, and I mean, I don't believe that we're going to hire a company that's going to come in and paint them two feet wide and narrow or so.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not worried about that. I just want to, you know, move this forward or not move it forward. I just want to confirm that you're going to provide an actual plan to the DPW director to review before you even go out there and hire somebody to go stripe it, because that's the way that I read the site plan. I just want to, if that has not been done, I just want to confirm that that's going to be done.
It's my expectation that if I can get an approval for the license, then I will coordinate with the DPW, and I would, and I'm going to suggest it's not going to happen for a couple of months because of the weather. But once I know that I'm moving forward, I'd be more than happy to go out and chalk line the entire property where all the spots would be, have a review from the DPW, and if they're in agreement with that, then I would permanently stripe it, or if they had any concerns, we could make an alteration, but.
So, so, so my, my thinking into what Mr. Chambers alluded to is that down the road, if there are concerns about the neighbors, who do they go to to enforce? Since it's private property, they would go to Commissioner Moody, I would assume, but I think we would want that plan, the decided plan, the final plan of the parking, on a plan submitted to your office on file, so that if you are parking somewhere else outside of that plan, where you're not supposed to be parking, it gives you the leverage to then enforce and ensure compliance. Simply saying, in the field, yeah, we agree where those lines are, but then there's no, there's no public record of that, there's no paper in hand that our inspectors can, can go out there and compare after the fact. So I want to make sure that there's going to be a final plan given to town staff that is in your folder of the, of the building, to ensure compliance, not just in the beginning, but two years, three years, four years, if your business is unfortunate.
I understand that. And I would assume if we were noncompliant, that my license would be in jeopardy. I mean.
I, I think.
I mean, the, I would assume the town would have the authority.
I think you go through several steps before we start talking about pulling licenses.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to figure out the answers here.
I'd like to speak now.
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Today I brought a map, his map, that he showed us. I went to the town hall, and even though it's not a legal document, the yellow shows exactly where the lot is in comparison to the neighbors. I also took pictures, which I'm going to pass out, and I'd like you to look at them and decide for yourselves whether this property can feasibly add another business to the two tenants that live there, and the four trucks plus the, what's that thing that they, the big?
Container.
Container. And then they have a container that runs and abuts the line of my friend next door, the property next door. It's gigantic. I'd like you to take a look, if you don't mind. Is that all right?
Sure. Thank you. Was this also provided to the planning board during their hearings?
No, I didn't go there.
Okay.
I didn't even know that was happening.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do board members have any additional questions?
I do have an additional question, and it's more a process question. The planning board's made a decision. There are conditions on the decision. Now we have an applicant before us, he hasn't, he has not satisfied the condition. We're going to give him a license, potentially, tonight. Where does that fall in the general scheme of the world? Because, again, we have a multi-board process. We have a board that nobody wants to relitigate. I was on the planning board. I know their rules. I know how to talk planning board. I'm not going to do it tonight, but I do have a problem issuing a license to someone when you haven't met the requirements of another board who actually controls the use of the property. I also have an issue with the fact that we don't have a plan on file. They signed that decision on the 12th of December. There should be a plan so that whomever is responsible for wandering out into the field and measuring can give us an answer that we can back off. So, again, you know, I'm not looking to hold you up, say yes, say no, but I do have a problem as a person who sits and has sat on a lot of different boards. I would have an issue with this board issuing a license when my conditions haven't been met.
This plan that I have supplied you, would this be sufficient to supply to DPW for, for an ongoing approval, or?
That is entirely up to staff. I don't tell staff, and I don't tell other boards what their rules and regulations are. I'm just the guy who has, who gets to vote on this stuff occasionally. So to me, first of all, if I were still on the planning board, I wouldn't accept your plan, because there are requirements that we need to have parking, you know, you have to have whiffs of roadways, you have to make sure that the turning radiuses are correct. Now, I'm not calling to question any staff member, because they know far more than I do about anything, but this plan doesn't show that. This plan doesn't show that you can operate that safely, to me. But that's not a selectmen issue right now. That would be a planning board issue. They reviewed it. They made their decision. Part of their decision says there's supposed to be an approval of parking. We don't have it. So I'm one member, there are four others. I'm going to rely on listening to them and listening to their judgment as well as the residents, and I'll make a decision.
That's fair.
I'm sorry. Mr. Bernard, did you have a comment?
Just the plan you have is the final approved plan. That is the plan on file with the town clerk. That is the plan the town, the planning board did approve. They did consider all access, all businesses that are on site, the apartments. That is the final plan. If there is some reason those lines don't match up with the eventual striping, they'd have to come back for modification, like any other plan that doesn't meet the requirements. So as of right now, that is the final plan.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if this is the final plan stamped October 13th, why were there conditions placed on the approval?
There were often conditions placed on approval. There were often conditions placed on approval for the planning board. We want to make sure that the parking, because it wasn't a surveyed plan, we want to make sure that someone, make sure that the parking spots were the appropriate size. That's why the condition was put in place. That is the plan that is proposed to be striped. Except if for some reason, after chalking out and DPW inspecting that that they don't meet, then there'll have to be some kind of modification. Which wouldn't be done until after.
Conditions of the Planning Board haven't been met yet because that verification hasn't happened.
Correct.
That's our concern, so to approve a license, knowing that there could be back and forth. Again, I'm not trying to overturn theirs. I would just like to have that condition met before this board takes a vote. That's, again, that's just one member. Thank you.
I think my concern with that is the timing. Like, it is not right now a time you could really, truly effectively stripe a lot.
So, I mean, so through the chair, as a new member, I'm just looking for a historical perspective. Has this board previously issued licenses for any purpose with the condition that it meet future requirements or approvals by staff or Planning Board, et cetera? Or we always said, you must meet 100% of all previous requirements before we issue you the license? And I don't know if the town manager has the history or any other members have the history of that.
It's a great question, and without actually researching the history of the votes, I think the language in the motion requires that all the conditions are met at the time that the issue, that the license is issued.
Through the chair, I still don't think I had an answer what the recourse is if they were found to be non-compliant. And I'm not saying that this is non-compliant, but should something come up and they're non-compliant, what are the steps that are taken? Is it multiple calls for law enforcement? Is it code enforcement goes out multiple times? Like, I just want to make sure that if a corrective action is needed, that the process is known. And again, without having the plan that was approved or verified, I think that puts us in some limbo, but. What is, what is the code enforcement plan should they be defiant?
I guess it would depend on the situation. We have in the past, the fellow billing commissioner have control with building permits. If for some reason something's not being complied with, it's conditioned on the license renewal, that's a check on what's going on. If the police department, I'll defer to the chief, it has issues with parking that is legal on 12th. That's the state police, I believe, jurisdiction. If there's legal parking on 12th. It depends on the situation. But we do have checks internally and with all approvals that we can try to make sure that applicant is obeying, following those conditions in the site plans.
Are there any additional questions?
I'm just still a little bit confused, but Mr. Menard indicated this was a final plan. But there is conversation that I need to submit a final plan. So I'm somewhat confused.
There's not, there's not, not that you have to submit a final plan. What the condition is, is that the proposed striping plan, and apparently this is the one, has to be submitted to the DPW Director for approval before it is, before it is finally striped. So that is the condition. So I think some of us were asking, was that step done?
Not to be redundant, I'm just obviously in a quagmire as to the, the striping of it. And it's, it's, I guess I'm just suggesting to the board that I will, we will comply with whatever the regulations are and whatever the striping would be required by the DPW. I really, I'm at a loss for anything other than, I don't know any other rule or regulation that I'm not complying with or that I'm not trying to understand so that I can rectify it. But at this point, I don't see that there's anything that I can rectify as I stated at the last meeting. But, but thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Do we want to close the hearing or?
Is, do the chair, are there any other members of the public that want to speak before we make a motion to close the hearing?
The Chief of Police has been mentioned a couple of times, so I might as well speak. So we're talking about two parking spaces on private property. We don't control or do enforcement generally on private property with parking issues. Mr. Menard mentioned that the state police have jurisdiction on Southbridge Street in Auburn, and I can assure you that the Auburn Police Department has full jurisdiction in the entire community. The board and for the public to know, they had asked me at the last meeting to do a study over the past year to see about the crashes down there. We had eight in 2023. Six out of the eight were all paper exchanges, all of which included company vehicles on or near the polar lot and some of the other businesses down there. The other two, one was a drunk driving crash that we made an arrest at, and the other one was a car versus a motorcycle with minor injuries down there at 12 and Elmwood Street. But with regards to the actual property itself, the area is not a problem area for us. I mean, Southbridge Street from both town lines is probably one of the busiest as far as crashes from town line to town line. We average about 1,500 to 1,600 motor vehicle crashes annually on Southbridge Street from the Oxford line all the way to the Worcester line. The busiest part of the crashes are at intersections down at like 12 and 20 and some of those areas down by Sheldon's and so on. But I can't really comment relative to the two parking spaces that he's looking to occupy to run his business because we wouldn't have any enforcement ability or we would only respond to disturbances or if there was a, if someone called in and reported a car parked on the sidewalk or obstructing traffic down there, we can go down there and legally address that. But I'm open for any questions if he has any others.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The chair is a yes.
I'm a no.
Are there, okay, well, the hearing is closed. I'm sorry if you had any additional questions.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion on the license?
Do you want a motion before discussion or do you want discussion and then a potential motion?
If there is additional discussion, I'm happy to take that.
Board members have a discussion or want to share their thoughts before we?
So I can certainly share my thoughts. And again, I'm not trying to overstep my bounds. The Planning Board has the say over this and we are issuing the license. I am concerned that we're going to add to a problem and no fault of the business owner here, but we need to know what those enforcement mechanisms are. We do have an existing resident that has brought complaints to us and we have tried to address it with the process and it doesn't seem to be addressing it. So I feel like if we're going to be creating that position, we need to understand what it's going to do to the impact of the residents and understand what their recourse is to address that. So that is my concern. It has nothing to do with one business over another. But just understanding if we're approving this and it sounds like there is no real enforcement mechanism or, you know, parking situation on a private property is one thing. But we realize if people are pulling over on the side of the road, by the time the police show up to this area, that car may or may not be gone. I know there's loading and unloading and that's part of the complaint and we're not addressing that. And I feel like approving this license adds to a lot of their concern and we don't have a mechanism for them to address that.
Madam Chair, if I, if it's, if I may, ask a couple of questions of staff. Or through you to the town manager, is this an annual license that would have to be approved each year? Or is this a one-time license and this is the only time that this business will be before us?
Annual renewal.
So this is an annual renewal, so similar to other businesses. If there were complaints reported throughout the year, that would be provided to us by staff and then that would give us cause not to approve the license and staff are shaking their head, so I'll take that as a yes. Additionally, and I apologize for putting you on the spot once again, Commissioner Moody, can you just confirm or discuss what happens when your office receives a complaint about a private business that is violating either a bylaw or a condition of their license? Is there enforcement that takes place?
Sure, thank you. First, I want to talk about, a little bit about the condition. If you read the wording of the condition, I think it was meant because the plan that was approved wasn't scaled, so the DPW Director can't look at that plan and approve it. So I think the intention was for him to mark out the spots, have her go out on site and approve that they meet what he's showing on the plan before he spends the money to permanently mark it. Further, if a business isn't following their approved parking plan, it becomes a code enforcement issue and my office would take enforcement.
So there is an enforcement mechanism that can take place if the residents
Absolutely.
have concerns, violations. And additionally, the police chief has already said that his officers, if there are complaints about parking violations or people blocking the public way, that the police upon call would respond. I've called them a couple of times. I'm sure we all have or seen them respond with their blue lights. They get there pretty fast. Probably faster than asking about a used car sale. So I'm not so worried about that. I think that that based on all the information provided by staff, that staff has confirmed here today, I'm comfortable approving this license with the condition that they meet all the requirements, just like we have built into every single license condition this board has ever voted on. And I have full confidence in our staff that if there are issues over the next year, not only will they address them at the time, but they'll also then let us know their issues. And then that'll be grounds for us not to approve the license.
Are there any other board members that would like to provide their opinion or discussion? So is there a motion?
I make a motion that the license would be approved, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well, so the license passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a second public hearing for a National Grid poll. Is the representative from National Grid here?
Here.
Hi.
And as well on the.
Let's jump.
He's just on.
Yeah. Hi, I think he's here too. Can you state your name and just give a quick description? Yep, sorry.
Make a motion to open the hearing, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair is a yes as well, so thank you for coming. Could you state your name and a little bit, a description on where this poll is going to be placed?
My name is Brandon McMillan and I'm with National Grid. I also have another engineer who is on Zoom currently. This current first petition is for a new poll that is on Albert Street that will be used to provide power to the new development that is going on the hill on Albert Street.
Okay. Are there, is there anybody here for public comment in the audience? Okay, do, do board members have any questions?
Yes, is this for the conduit or this is for the poll, correct?
This is for the poll.
On what property and whose property is that going to go? What number?
It's on the town property on the right away.
It's on the town right away, so it's not on someone's lawn?
Correct.
Chair, I believe before us last time, there's an existing poll or one nearby. And we were told that they couldn't utilize it or chose not to utilize it.
So that, that existing poll cannot be utilized to provide another riser, another method to go underground because there is an existing one and there's not enough room to safely manage to do that. So that's why we need to install a new poll to be able to provide that method of going underground for the conduit.
And it's not just a cost savings?
No, it's not just a cost saving. There just is not enough room on the pole to safely do that.
I don't know what's enough room on the pole.
So, so we have standards that we follow in our book and according to our standards to safely have primary voltage go down underground through a riser like that, there needs to be a certain amount of clearance to everything. And with what is currently on the pole, there is not a way to safely add an additional primary riser, high voltage riser to that pole.
Is there another pole nearby that could be utilized rather than adding a new one?
In my quick look at the poles that are existing, there is not an existing pole nearby that could be utilized for that. Jared, who's on Zoom, could better answer that question than I as he's the designer who originally designed this project.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, could you just please state your name for the record?
Jared Aker from National Grid.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's, that's, there's only one pole located on that street right now. And like was previously stated, there's already a riser on that. Our clearances don't allow for two, so this would be the second pole on the street. And we don't have any further plans as of now to keep adding poles. This would just be to get the power underground.
For the chair, when you say there are no other poles, are you talking on Blaker Street or Albert Street?
So there's no other poles on Albert Street extension going up towards the development. There are poles on Blaker Street, but those are not really a feasible option as you'd have to then get into tearing, tearing up the road and also possibly adding another pole onto Blaker Street. The, you know, Blaker Street would have to be re-examined to see what would be a feasible option to add a riser. But then you'd, you'd need to get into opening up the street and and interfering with more of the, you know, the residents' roads rather than, rather than another pole on a side street.
So the the intention here is with adding this pole, you will not be digging up Blaker Street?
Correct. With adding this pole here, we won't have to dig up Blaker Street and we won't even have to dig up Albert Street any more than what the development currently has done because the conduit will be run through the grass right away and not in the actual street itself, which is part of the second petition.
Are there any additional questions by board members?
So I just have one question. I was trying to look it up on my phone, but unfortunately I couldn't. In terms of the, the location of the residence is at 24 Albert Street, where exactly is this pole going to get inserted relative to their, their house or their property?
It will be directly next to the sidewalk in line with the existing pole that is currently on the corner of Albert Street and Blaker. And I believe it will be about 30 feet back from the existing pole.
So it's not sitting directly in front of their house? It's not driveway?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No, so their driveway feeds out to Blaker Street and I believe their house is oriented towards Blaker Street as well. So this, so this pole is going to be. So this, so this poll is going to be 30 feet following, following the previous, the line of the previous poll. And it's going to be past the side, and it's going to be past the sidewalk. So it's going to be in between the street and the sidewalk. It's not even going to be on the, on that neighbor's property.
Is there a reason why you're putting it so close, why you're putting P-10 so close to P-9 and you're not spacing it out more? Clutter is also a concern of the residents, I would imagine.
Yeah, so, so we were just minimizing how many, you know, how, how much distance the polls had to go down the street. If, if it, if it was, you know, more, more pleasing and permissible to all parties, there is, there is the ability to push it a little bit further out. There was just no real need for it, if that makes sense.
Madam Chair, is, to be honest, are there any of the residents here from this neighborhood that were here at the last meeting? I know it was like several meetings ago, but I remember their, their concerns were the visual clutter, the location to their property, et cetera, so I just want to get input from them.
Oh, yes, hi. Absolutely, can you just state your name and your address for the record?
My name is Phil Caracci, I'm with Eastland Partners, I work for the developer. I think the initial confusion was, there was a sketch that National Grid sent out to the homeowners and on Blaker Street, one of the neighbors on Blaker Street thought there was a poll going in his yard. And I believe a former colleague of ours, Clayton Williams, sent you guys all over a plan showing the new location, right? And if you look on that plan, oh, do you mind if I come up and see what you got?
Sure.
The concern wasn't so much, there's Poll 10, the new poll location. The concern was these dotted lines, I believe, they thought a poll was going on their property. There's plenty of distance here. This grid is an uphill grade, there's retaining wall over there. It's not in any hindrance of any visual traffic, no. It's the best location for this poll. As National Grid said, I don't see it being a problem at all. And I would hope we would not. We really need to get this going. I think those are the questions, I actually met some of the individuals. I brought all the women everywhere. I think, I think everyone is pretty good right now.
Yep. Can you actually just add a mic so we, so everybody that's listening at home could also hear you?
So anyways, I walked around the neighborhood with a couple, because, I mean, there's a big development going in their backyard. So some people get nervous, so I walked around and addressed a bunch of concerns. But this one seemed to be the one that were thinking the poll was going on Blaker Street on someone's property, and that's what spawned all this. But it's just a simple poll going in with some conduit to get up to the development.
Thank you. Do board members have any additional questions? We would need a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the poll?
We have a lot of takers tonight, Madam Chair. Well, I guess I'll get my best accent on and I'll make the motions. Then we have music, someone must know I was going to say something. I'll make a motion that we approve the petitioners' request as outlined in their filing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We have a second continued public hearing with National Grid about a conduit, is there a motion to reopen the hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was one.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Okay, so could you give us a little information about the conduit?
So this is a petition for conduit running from the new poll, Poll 10, running underground, not in the roadway, to feed high-voltage power to the new development going on the hill.
Do board members have any questions?
So you said this will not be in the roadway?
Correct, this is not in the roadway, so it will be in the grass of the public right-of-way.
Okay, are there any plans from the planning board approval of planting any street trees along Albert Street as part of this?
I do not know, as that would not be part of National Grid's plan.
Heard of the gentleman.
Phil Caracci with Eastland Partners again, there are street trees that are already planted on the opposite side of the road, so the street trees are in.
Thank you.
It's only through the grass, there is no paved sidewalk that this is going under?
To my knowledge, that has been the plan, there is no, no disturbance to the roadway. It is all through the grass and that is why there are pole boxes and not manholes.
And is there a sidewalk on that side? Thank you.
So the sidewalk is on the opposite side of the, of the street. This one is going to be all in the grass, all out of the way, not, not tearing up the existing paved road. It won't interfere with any of the pre-existing trees, it should be pretty clean and easy.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair is, opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the petition?
Anyone?
We defer to you, Mr. Carpenter. Joy being Vice Chair.
Yes, the joy. I'll make a motion that we approve the petition as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Okay, thank you so much. Moving along, we have a presentation on a development project at 88 Wallace Avenue. Is the developer here? Great. Hi. Yeah, absolutely. Hi, could you just give us your name and you can start your presentation?
Sure, my name is Sotir Papa Lilo. I live at 5 Coachman Ridge Road in Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. I'm here this evening to make a presentation on a proposal to develop 88 Wallace Street. This is a very preliminary stage. Most of the information that you probably wouldn't want to hear about may not be available, but I'm going to try to do the best that I can to answer your questions. This is the process that's required by a lender, which is the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, which is the entity that ultimately provides permanent financing.
I'm so sorry, can you speak into the microphone so the people at home can hear you? Thank you so much, no.
So this is a development where it's ultimately going to be financed by the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. This is the entity that will oversee the development through the entire process. The Massachusetts Housing Partnerships require any development that involves affordable housing to submit a project eligibility application for review and consideration in order to go to the next step of the process. This meeting is intended for me to make a presentation of an idea of developing the property and trying to give some thought to how I would like to see the project developed. Now again, being able to do what I want to see done, it's going to be determined by the professionals, the engineers, that I have to hire and look into addressing the feasibility of developing the project. That will be coupled also with concerns that the town may have, or better yet, the abutists will be living around that area. Once the project eligibility application is submitted with MHP, they will set up an appointment to come and visit the site and meet with the town to get their input firsthand. And after that process, if the Massachusetts Housing Partnership determines that the project is eligible, then they will issue a letter for which will allow me to make a full application with the Zoning Board of Appeals to obtain a comprehensive permit. Having said, the process itself today is one that I will be asking the Board of Selectment to see if they would be willing to write me a recommendation letter considering the proposal to develop 88 Wallace Street. Having said that, what I'd like to do is give you some information about the property. That is the location, thank you. 88 Wallace Street is approximately a six-acre parcel. It is owned by Stonville Realty Trust. And I believe about 2007 or 2009, they had made a presentation to the planning board for a nine-light subdivision that ultimately it never became a reality. The parcel has roughly most of its acreage, I would say about 80% of it, at the crest of the site itself, where most of the development is going to be proposed. The proposal is to do 72 units, three-bedroom units, I'm sorry, 72 units in four buildings, each building having 18 units. Of those, eight will be three-bedroom units, 44 will be two-bedroom units, and 20 of them will be one-bedroom units. From the site, and if I may show you the site plan that you see up there, the, the buildings themselves, they are about 70 feet away from the property line that is to the south. This end of this property, which is the western part, the closest building will be 40 feet, but you got the reservoir here. On the other end, it's at least 30 feet away from the property line and it's all wooded on that section. The abutists who are living in this location and over there, the distance from the property line is 25 feet, but the elevation here is so high and I will be keeping as much of the vegetation as possible. So I don't believe anyone, based on this plan that's presented, is going to be able to see the buildings that are going to be situated on top of the hill. There will be obviously, you know, with that number of units, cars going back and forth. But like I said, this is a very preliminary stage, we will have a traffic study done, we have to do the drainage analysis. There's a lot of work to be done, but I think it's in a very private location where people who will be driving around Wallace have, I don't believe they'll be able to see the project. I do have to work with the abutists who are living along Wallace Street and see how we can mitigate cars coming and leaving the site, meaning from headlights during the evening and that kind of stuff. But like that, there are other things that you may have issues with that you want to see considered as part of the planning process. So at this stage, I also would like to tell you that these buildings that you see here, I am building them already in Grafton. The, it's a 40-unit project in three buildings and they are located at 23 Prentice Street in North Grafton. If anybody, I wanted to see firsthand what the buildings would look like. And I can also show you some of the model homes that we have within the building, so you get to see the quality of the, of the development itself. I think in, 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 in this stage, it might be good for me to answer the questions as opposed to describing more information. There were meetings established with the DCG and I have had quite a few comments presented to me that I've already shared with the engineer for consideration, at least at the very preliminary stages, from the police department, the fire department, the water department, DPW, the border health and the sewer department. And, you know, these are very preliminary comments and I have a lot of work ahead of me. But I do want to have, you know, I would like to share with you that if you have questions and you have concerns, that I'm hoping that I'll be able to hear them from you and I want to do the best that I can to address them. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you. So I think this was just a presentation, I think the best course of action to make sure that residents of that area get to ask their questions would be to schedule a public meeting for this. Do board members have any questions that they'd like to ask at this point?
How many, how many units are being proposed and how many of those units are affordable?
There's a total of 76 units, of which 25% of them will be affordable.
And at what affordable rate are they?
They have to meet the HUD minimum standards that we have to deal with. The exact rates, I don't know what they are in Auburn. I know in Grafton, for a two-bedroom unit, it's roughly $1,675. For a three-bedroom, they're $1,900.
And what's the unit breakdown, if you know that yet?
Yes, I do. There will be a total of 21-bedroom units, 44 two-bedroom units and eight three-bedroom units. The three-bedroom units are mandated by the Massachusetts Housing Partnership.
And just to confirm, I know one of the buildings is pretty close, but all your construction will remain outside the 100-foot wetland boundary?
That is correct, yes. Now, there is space, I mean, originally I had proposed to do all two-bedroom units. That was the idea, but, and I had 148 parking spaces. Even though I had an overflow area where I can develop more parking spaces, I thought it might be better to leave the parking in the arrangement that has been proposed the same as it is right now. But by reducing some of the two-bedroom, as a one-bedroom unit, I am eliminated at least one parking space for each of those units. So now I have over 20 units for guest parking.
What's your proposed timeline for this project?
Oh, it was yesterday. No, seriously, it depends on the technicalities of the project. You know, the engineers will be diligently working with the departments, the various departments, to make sure that we are addressing all the requirements necessary to make the project feasible to develop. Ideally speaking, I mean, I have worked on a couple of dozen projects over the last 30 years. The projects have been approved, like in the town of Weston, believe it or not, in 18 months. And there are other projects that I had to go through the Housing Appeals Committee that took me 10 years to get it approved. So it depends on the level of the project and the cooperation that you get. I mean, I have been successful because I have been able to get a lot of input from a lot of departments, a lot of professionals. So when you put a plan together that everybody sees it's going to work, at the end of the day, it's the best project you can actually get. So is time important? Of course it is, but you can't plan for something like this because you don't know what's going to come across. And if you can solve it, and if you can't, how much, how are you going to solve it? How much money is going to take? But at the end of the day, Bill Hannigan from Hannigan Engineering, who has done at least a dozen projects for me, is going to be the lead person when dealing with the towns and going through the engineering process.
For the record, my name is Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering. I just wanted to jump in and just, you asked a question about the wetlands. We haven't delineated the wetlands on the site yet, so to make a statement that there is not- So to make a statement that there's not going to be any work within the buffer zone, I think is a little bit premature. So I wanted to just come up and say that, just so that there was no blanket statement that we're never going to be doing work in the buffer zone. We haven't flagged the wetlands yet, so, you know, we have to take a look at that. It's going to be part of the process as well.
But if I can eliminate the process of not having to deal in with the Conservation Commission, that's another, less work for me. We do have an area that has been delineated by town plans that are available. So what Bill is saying is that he needs to confirm that line. That's one of the examples I was referring to earlier, that we need to go through the process and find out what can be done. I'm hoping we're not going to be within the buffer area.
Do board members have any additional questions?
Waller's Ave is a pretty narrow street. Has anyone on the DCG, that committee, expressed concerns about the width of the road and asked for any input?
We have worked with a traffic engineering firm on a preliminary basis. They did not indicate to me right now whether or not there's going to be an issue with the width of the road. But again, that's another question that we need to look at and carefully analyze to make sure that the health and safety is in place there. It may require, it may not be. At this point, I'm not, I don't have enough information to share with the board.
Besides density, would, like, if you went through a normal permitting process here in town, would you be looking for other waivers? And I think you just mentioned you're trying to avoid the wetlands.
Correct.
Are you trying to avoid other waivers in a typical process?
In this particular project, I think the one that is more distinct, it's the grade entering the site. I think we may not be at 100% compliance with the planning board's recommendations for grade coming to the site. But the rest of the stuff, or what we need to have, if there is a multi-family zoning section of the bylaw, Bill and I usually try to work to satisfy that component. So the waivers that we need to have are limited to just changing the use of the place from, let's say, single-family to multi-family. And that's something we're going to have to evaluate. But right now, the only one that I know of that is for sure I'm going to need a waiver is the grade of the road entryway. The setbacks, I think I comply with. The density, obviously, that's something that is being proposed. And I'm not sure, based on the zoning bylaw, what multi-family zoning allows for a density. But like, again, as like I said, the intent is to limit the number of waivers and try to comply as much as possible to the existing zoning that currently exists in town for multi-family housing.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you for your presentation. Like I said before, there's a whole bunch of people in the room that probably have a lot of questions for you. And the best way to do that is going to be through a public hearing. So we should schedule a public hearing so we can notify the Abadas and move forward and allow them to ask their questions.
Okay, fair enough. And in the meantime, I'll be more than happy to meet with any one of you. And I will share you my phone number and my email address. So at your leisure, if you really want to know more information, I could do it on a one-to-one basis or in a public forum as well. My phone number is area code 508-922-1467. And my email address is sotir, S-O-T-I-R,
Thank you so much.
Would you be scheduling the date of the meeting tonight? Or is that something?
I will reach out to Mr. Sotir to see what works best.
Okay.
With the board's schedule as well as...
Terrific.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
5B for us before 5A.
Sure. Can we move up 5B before 5A?
Make a motion that we move up Agenda Item 5...
B, yeah.
Make a motion we move up Agenda Item 5E.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The chair is a yes as well. So we're in the departmental items, a new section, and there is a fire station fit test discussion, so... Chief, would you like to come up? Maybe we can give people a little extra time. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we are here tonight to discuss the test fit of the proposed fire headquarters at the 10 Prospect Street location. You were emailed with your packet on Friday, two sample test fits labeled A and B. I had, I know Sharon had sent you probably rapidly after you received the first email. We received the updated test fit from the architect, so that was sent to you. So the test fit B that was sent that has both the police and the fire station, the updated one that you'll be looking at has the communication center off of the rear of the fire station closest towards Washington Street, not on the Dunkin' Donuts side. So just for a point of reference of the two you sent, that's the updated one. So with me this evening, I have Matt Salad. He is our architect from Tekton. I will be turning it over to him in a minute. But the focus of tonight is just to show the board what the possibilities are of this site. And I'd like Matt just to talk about the pros and the cons of each of these fit, these fits. But we, I am seeking guidance from the board to ultimately make a decision on which direction you would like us to go. Because that is going to determine what the ultimate conceptual design of the building will look like. And the big difference is, test fit A is a two-story station. Test fit B would be a three-story station. So we need some guidance on what direction we want to go in order for Matt and his team to start the conceptual design. But I think, you know, in fairness to the board, we need to hear the good, the bad, the ugly, you know, in terms of what all the pros and cons of these are in order for you to make an educated decision. I know that some of you may want some time to digest this. I know the board is meeting next Monday, and there is a possibility that we could schedule a time if the board didn't meet or didn't want to take this up on that Monday, maybe a board meeting prior to town meeting. But I ultimately think this is going to be a question that town meeting members are going to ask on Tuesday. So, you know, it is something that hopefully the board can digest and make a decision on prior to the town meeting so we can get some good information for them. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and then we can answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much, Chief, Madam Chair, board. Pleasure being here with you this evening. We've been working together for close to seven or eight years now, working on this public safety feasibility study and really trying to find the fire department and as well as the police department, a new home here in Auburn. And we've looked at somewhere around, somewhere around two dozen, almost 30 different properties throughout the center of Auburn here. And it's great to see a plan that, you know, that really has some good legs behind it, some nice feasibility. And we're looking forward to moving forward with this project. It's been, it's been well overdue, and you folks have been great to work with so far. So we do have two options here. And I would note, these are not phasing plans, so this isn't Option A, Part One. Option A, Part Two, these are distinct and separate site test fits. The first one that you see on the screen here is what we would call Option A. This is utilizing this parcel along Prospect Street as a fire station headquarters with the regional communication center on the property itself. What this, what this test fit does not afford is room for the police station to be added now or in the future on this property. So it would be, and would be maintained as a fire station only and emergency communications center. But what it does allow is for that building to be a little bit more expansive and expand in its use a bit more. So we're able to limit this building to a two-story building. Fire stations in particular, as well as police stations, fare better when they're kept down to, in a limit of stories, you know. Certainly in Boston, that may be a different story where you have that density and you sort of are forced to go up. But firefighters responding to an emergency situation from their living quarters or administrative offices, the more floors that they have to traverse, the more dangerous that it is for the first responders responding by fire pole and things like that, as well as increasing the response time for getting out of the station and to the scene of the emergency. We're also sort of limited, you know, this parcel does have quite a bit of room as far as this test fit goes for adequate parking. Within the program of the fire station itself, we have a large training room for the fire department staff to come in, have regular meetings, trainings, seminars, things like that, as well as for the community as well, for education purposes. We also have a mechanics bay for the maintaining of the operation of any of the fire apparatus within the facility itself. You'll note that just to the north of the plan, you'll see that there's sort of the drive coming into the bays right at the top of the screen without access to Prospect Street. That's the mechanics bay, so that's coming into the back of the building and then exiting out of the back. And then below that, there are four double-deep bays. So each bay would house two fire apparatus for response. In addition to that, there's a series of parking spaces. We're trying to maximize the amount of parking on the site. Sort of the issue that we have at all three of the public safety facilities within town is limited parking, there just isn't enough room for all their vehicles, the equipment, personal vehicles, things like that. So understanding that there's that large training room component within this, we need to make sure that we're accommodating both shift change staff, so all the staff that are there in the morning versus when the next shift is coming in. We want to make sure that we're accommodating all their vehicles as well as that training component. So that's sort of what drives the parking count within the program itself. And this site test fit affords about 144 parking spaces, which is significantly more than they have today in what accommodate all of their parking requirements for the future facility. In addition to that two-story fire station, this also has the one-story communication center that's envisioned as sort of a regional dispatch center. So that's sort of just to the southwest of the fire station itself. One other thing to note on this as well, there is a wetland just to the west of the parcel. We have indicated there's two blue stripe lines within the site test fit itself. Those indicate the 50 and 100-year setbacks. The drive that goes between Washington Street and South Bridge is an existing condition, so we would just be repaving that, cleaning that up. But there would be, it's an existing non-conforming condition there, but we wouldn't envision building any new construction, new building on the site within the buffers either. So with that, I think we can jump to the next test fit. Thank you, Chief. This is a different arrangement. And what this is demonstrating is the capacity for the parcel to have both a fire station, the regional dispatch center, as well as a police station, envisioning that as a future construction down the road. So we build fire and dispatch now, and then at some point in the future, should the town so choose, you could then install or construct the police station. The site certainly gets a little bit more congested when we bring in all these different pieces from the programs. We have a reduction in our total parking count. The previous site test fit had 144 spaces that we were able to accommodate, and we're able to accommodate 132 parking spaces with the police station. One thing to note that's a little bit different between the two, the fire station is generally sited in the same location for both. But the southern leg of it, that sort of formed that L in the first site test fit, is a little bit narrower and a little bit shorter in that so that we have enough room to fit the police station program, which has requirements for the ground-level square footage, which sort of drives that footprint, as well as the Sally Port, which is that blue box to the north of the building. That's where detainees that have been arrested are brought in securely and safely into the building and then brought in for their booking and processing. So that's sort of a special route that comes into a garage, and that eats a little bit of the parking on the site as well. One thing I do want the board to pay attention or to note, as I had mentioned, with the fire station and some concerns about going up into a third-story arrangement, it does happen, you know, it's not that the department is able to accommodate it, but there are certainly concerns that should be noted with the safety of responding from a third story down into the apparatus bay floor. There are similar issues with a police station being a multi-story facility as well. Primarily, there's a detention area within this for the lockup that's associated with Sally Port and some cells for detainees. That sort of is one of those needs-to-be-on-the-ground-floor area. The last thing you really want to do is have your officers that are arresting somebody that's committed a crime being escorted up a set of stairs or being brought into an elevator where a scuffle or something could happen. So there is a safety concern with that. There are also public functions that happen within the police station. And because of the compressed footprint that we have to accommodate, some of those functions would have to happen above the ground floor because of the lockup area. So I do want the board to be aware that this arrangement of the public safety facility would require both public access on multifloors and just a little bit of a delayed-in-response out of the site with the fire department. It all works, it all fits. It can be accommodated, and it's feasible in either arrangement. But these are some of the concerns that we certainly wanted to raise to the board and have you weigh in on or ask questions further on.
Do board members have any questions?
Oh, go ahead. Oh, all right. What's this blue area here?
That is the area of wetlands. And I should note, that has not been delineated by a wetland scientist. That's as is indicated on Mass GIS. So in furtherance of the project, as we get into conceptual design and schematic design, we will have a wetland scientist go and flag that and delineate that accordingly.
How about these blue lines here?
Those are the wetland setbacks off of that. So those are the 50 and 100-foot buffers.
911 Operations Center. What are you proposing for a square footage on that?
It's a little over, it's right around 2,000 square feet. Within that program, we have six emergency communication consoles. Those have sort of a set footprint to that. We also have a communications equipment room, which is the main server room that operates the emergency communication center, two supervisors' offices, a locker room, two restrooms, and a small break area. We sort of like to keep everything contained within that space, so...
Is there a requirement for them to be on the first floor? Could they be on the third floor?
They certainly could be on an elevated floor, yes.
That would help with the response time should we choose a third story.
Depending on how we arrange the building, it certainly could. We would certainly have to lay out that floor plan in detail to make sure that we could accommodate all those. I would assume, and Chief, I think you could answer this better than I, some security concerns that we would certainly have to address if the regional dispatchers were circulating to other parts of your building?
Yeah, I think my immediate concern, we're trying, and you know, this conversation the police chief and I have had quite a bit. The dispatch center is almost a third entity. It's not part of the police department. It's not part of the fire department. It's really a third service. And by having it, the benefit of having it affixed to the fire station allows us to share some utilities, like electrical and plumbing and HVAC. But this is going to be designed where there is no access But this is going to be designed where there is no access from the fire station to communications and vice versa. It's its own independent thing. So by putting it on the third floor of the fire station, we've now made it part of the fire station. But it also uses up the square footage that where in order for us to get the square footage we need, if we were to put communications on the third floor, we would still need the 2,000 and square the 2,000 square feet off the back. Is that what you're suggesting? Are you trying to figure out how to eliminate the 2,000 square feet?
Trying to think response time because if we go with third floor and they can fit up there, then you guys again would only need it for maybe some storage or something. Then your living and your operations are on the second. And then my next question, I'm assuming the first floor is going to be a lot higher, like ceiling height. Are we going like the second story going to be, you know, 15 feet? I'm assuming for your vehicles. So is the whole second floor going to be one level? Or is it going to be like one office section is going to be at like a 10-foot height and then like kind of mirror up until you get over the bay? Or is it going to be first floor is going to be all 15 or 20-foot? And then you build on top?
So so the way the way it works, you know, so a fire station, the apparatus base where the trucks go, that has sort of a fixed minimum height. And it works out to about two and a half stories when you factor in the structure and everything like that. So that three so that both of these site test fits envision the fire apparatus bays being their own sort of independent construction, not building over top of those. The lower wing to the south, that's the portion that would that would either be at two stories or three stories. And we do that for a number of reasons. Primarily, building over the apparatus floor is very expensive because we can keep the structure very lightweight. It's a very long span structure that we need in those bays. And as soon as we start to put a live load in there, like people in in office space and things like that, we have to increase the weight of that steel to carry that load and add columns into the bays. So those are those increased costs, they they reduce the the performance of the apparatus bays themselves because you don't want columns in the middle of them. So people aren't running into them as they're negotiating between the trucks on a response and things like that. So idea. So realistically, what you would see on the two-story is is sort of a lower plane of the building itself all the way around, where on the three-story scheme, you would actually see that administrative wing pop up a little bit above the apparatus bays.
And what square footage is that compared to the apparatus bays, like total office or administrative?
Off the top, I don't have the numbers in front of me right right now, but I believe the apparatus bay square footage is just over 9,000 square feet. And I think we're just over 25,000 square feet for the entire building.
What is it 90 by 90 or is it 90 by 80?
90 by 82. Plus the support spaces.
True.
So 110 by 82.
Yeah, so it's 7,300. And then with the support spaces, what do you say was around 10,000?
Yeah, between nine and 10,000.
Yeah. And then the total is 27,000. So it would be about 16,000 to 17,000 of the rest of the station. So the total square footage of everything is 27,000 square feet.
So I just, Mr. Carpenter, if you want to go first.
I did, but please go.
No, no, no. Go ahead. Go first, please.
Exciting. We're talking about history tonight. We were never asked to do this under the previous plan. So why are we being asked suddenly to do it now? We were never asked to approve the building plan. We weren't asked to approve pretty much anything. So I wasn't even aware that we were going to be asked to approve this because I may be over 18 and I guess quasi-popular, but I don't know that I'm competent to decide. I would think the planning board, they deal with this, they might be competent. I don't know that I'm competent, but that's neither here nor there. My question generally is, historically, we were not even we were not even asked about building height, where it was going. None of that came to the Board of Selectmen. Why are we doing it now?
Sure. That's a great question. So really, and you're right, there is no requirement for you to review or or do this. Why I'm here tonight is I think this is a little different than the previous plans that we've had. The previous plans were a little more defined in terms of we were pursuing a joint building. So there was no real discussion about it was going to go on a site, a combined facility. When the board voted to remove the police from the project and we were going to go with a fire headquarters only, there was early discussion, especially when we started talking about the Prospect Street site, that started really the night that the board became aware of this, as to whether or not the potential existed to have a police station on the same site. I view this discussion, to be quite honest with you, I view this discussion to be more political in nature versus procedural. You're probably selling yourself a little short in terms of that you don't have the right, the the expertise to weigh in, right? But I I'm viewing this honestly more as a political decision. We all know, and it has been well, you know, publicized over the years. I've heard it countless times since we started this project in 2017. People have said things around this this concept of, I hope we don't make the same mistakes that we've done in the past by trying to put, you know, 10 pounds of stuff into a five-pound bag. I hope we're looking into the future. You know, I hope that we're not downsizing too much. So you're coming to us in 20 years and saying that you need a bigger facility, right? I'm we're listening to all of those things. I do I I do not want to make the decision, nor do I think it's my authority to make the decision in a vacuum as to whether or not we go with option A or option B in terms of which which to go with. So in 10, 15, 20 years, when we're having a conversation potentially about a future police station, quite frankly, we're not criticized about, well, we should have left room for the police station. Or if we do leave room for the police station, and ultimately that's done, we start talking about the site constraints that are on it. And then the comment is, we should have never put the police station here, right? There are there are things and factors that come into this, honestly, more political in nature than procedural. And those are things that I think the Board of Selectmen should weigh in on. So there's, you know, so you were part of the decision-making process in 2024 as to what we did. So when it's looked at 15 or 20 years from now, it wasn't the fire chief who solely made the decision on this is what we're going to do. Because quite quite frankly, I don't think that's my decision to make alone in a vacuum. So you're right, there's there's no procedural or thing that but I'm asking the board to weigh in on this decision to help guide sort of what we're doing in the future.
So I'm more than happy to jump in and help help you make that decision. I just have a couple of questions. Is there any with with either one of these? Because the footprint looks the same as it relates to this. Is there any impact on the existing park?
That's a great question. Thank you. I was actually going to close with that. But I did want to update the board because I know that it came up on night one in executive session when we presented this. The topic of Article 97 came up. So I want to thank my my secretarial staff in-house and Captain Greg Moran was a big player in this. We spent weeks and weeks reviewing past Board of Selectmen meeting minutes. I actually ran into Mr. Carpenter one day and told him of our adventure of, you know, what we were doing. We started back in 1978. We know the history of the property back to the late 1800s, early 1900s. The town has always owned the property. So we knew that. We knew that we never acquired the property with grant money. We knew all of those things. And we knew what the history of the property was up until 1982, when the West Street School was on the property and the town allowed the VFW to utilize the property. And then the board ultimately voted to remove the VFW in 1982, and they ordered the building to be demolished. So we knew that history. But we went back and we started in 1978. And we reviewed meeting minutes of the Board of Selectmen from 1978 until 2005, upon completion of the Veterans Memorial Corridor. And at no time over those decades, did the Board of Selectmen ever take any action to officially declare that parcel as parkland, recreation land. So we did consult with the state to find out what that trigger was going to be. She basically told us right where to look and what we needed to find. So there is no indication that that land is subject to Article 97. Now, I did mention it because I think it is important to note, I did mention it during the pre-town meeting tonight, is that the the Veterans Park will not be affected by this project at all. So the portion of land that we're looking to cite, what will be the apparatus bays, sits right about where the old like skating rink was working towards Washington Street. So as I mentioned in the meeting tonight, right now, one of the shortfalls of that park is there's not one dedicated parking space on municipal property to access that park. So you're either accessing it because you're already on foot, or you have to park on private property in order to go to the park. So in this plan, you know, you'll see on either side, you know, Plan A with the fire station only, the green space is a little wider than Plan B. But the plan is to utilize that green space with a couple of benches, utilize some parking on that area. So there's actually some parking for the Veterans Park. And then basically, instead of having the park in its current configuration where it goes sort of north to south, if you're looking at it, it'll go, you know, more, you know, west to east and then come up this way. We'll tie some sidewalk in with the existing sidewalk. So we feel that regardless of what proposal we go with, there's actually going to be some enhancements to the Veterans Memorial Park that don't exist today by way of of parking and access. But we did we did deeply explore that Article 97, and we were happy to see that we were sort of clear of that. So there weren't sort of those extra hoops, as you know, that we would have had to jump through. So I do want to thank some of my, again, administrative staff for for jumping in on that. It was it was quite a history lesson, you know, reading those minutes. So thank you for the question, Mr. Curran.
Yeah, thank you for doing that due diligence because I was rather concerned about that process if we had to go through it. Talking about history, I remember several representations previously with the previous design. One of the issues that that limited your ability to do anything at the Auburn Street site was decisions made by our predecessors many moons ago to go cheap and be petty wise and pound foolish when it came to building the bays and with materials that limited the ability that when growth need was needed to build above them. That's one of the contributing factors that have put us in this position. And I'm a little concerned that we might be traveling down that same road that we don't want to build over the bay because it's more expensive with the reinforced steel and we're going to go this cheaper route. Are we going to find ourselves potentially in 20 years from now wishing we hadn't done that again? And I just want to, what's the cost differential really when when you're when you're talking about that?
So I I wouldn't be able to put a number to that. Certainly, as we further develop the design, and we have our cost estimator involved, we can we can provide those alternates. So we can certainly have a structural engineer size what that would be. Instead of putting a typical roof on there, just metal deck and roofing material, we can put a concrete slab above the bays and size the steel accordingly. The one caveat I would put with that, I've run into this a number of times in my career, is you get a building and somebody goes, 20 years ago when we built that, we designed it so that it could go vertically and add another floor on there. But codes change, seismic codes, structural codes, things like that do change over time. And so there there's there's no way to guarantee 30, 40 years from now that you wouldn't have to modify it further in order to to accommodate. But we can certainly study what that cost is. And if it and if it is the prudent approach by the town, we'd be happy to accommodate that.
And the the last thing I'll say, and this is more of a statement than a question, I think we all agreed, I think the vote was 5-0, that, you know, there was a real need for the fire department to move forward now, that you guys were busting at the seams, you were you were, you know, working in conditions that are less than ideal. But at least for me, at the time, there was also a clear recognition that in moving forward with the fire, we cannot forget about the police. And I think, you know, well, A looks great to hear that. And and one of the benefits of this property was that it provided the future potential for a combined public safety structure, or not structure, two separate structures, but same parcel. And it provided that flexibility. And that was one of the reasons why I supported moving forward at that time with the purchase. So just speaking for me as a select board member and as a voter, I'm not interested in anything that rules out from day one, the construction of a police station, whether it be five, 10, 15, or 20 years from now on this parcel. I think we owe it to our officers and the personnel to keep them in mind when we are making these decisions. Thank you.
Do board members have any other questions? So like Mr. Curran, I wanted to know what the possibility of expansion on either one of these was, or if that was considered?
Yeah, I think in in terms of the 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 combined site, the the one with both the police and fire, the the ability to grow would have to be vertically, as you stated. In terms of the option A with the fire station only component, that certainly leaves room for expansion for the fire department. Now, I would note that in a new, modern fire facility, like the one that we would design, it's not typical that you would plan for future growth of the building expansion outward for a fire department typically. That would require another fire station somewhere else in the community. They they sort of, you don't have 60,000 square foot fire stations that that just there isn't the need there because they they require more satellite locations.
Does anybody else have any questions? Absolutely.
So as we talk of expansion, because I was history once upon a time with the police station. And so irrespective of a police station expanding, we have added to the fire department. And if we keep the burn rate we're going, what are we doing about expanding facilities for more firefighters?
So yeah, so that's a great question. So if if this project and the way that this project is being proposed, that allows for future growth of additional firefighters at the Prospect Street site. And currently, when administration moves out of the Auburn Street site and over to Prospect Street, that's going to free up additional square footage in Auburn Street. But as it stands right now, the number of firefighters that would be assigned there, there is enough rooms there. But with the off with the administrative space that would be freed up, it's going to allow for some kind of redesign. Really, that growth is going to come in Prospect Street. And the and within that 27,000 square feet, we have planned for the future for additional firefighters on what we realistically feel is a 30-year, 40-year mark. We realistically believe that that's what we're building for today, you know, at some point, right, there's, you know, there there's a number where it's just not realistic and we're not, we're not going to plan for that. But but we've we built in and we planned for the square footage of what what we believe a realistic number is over the next 20 to 30 years. But with administration moving out of headquarters, that frees up a lot of square footage that can be redesigned in Auburn Street, really to kind of take on that additional firefighter growth. So that has been taken into consideration.
I'll have a question. Are we thinking of putting an elevator in this building?
That's correct.
So there's potential concern that people might have access to information or spaces they shouldn't. Why can't we have requirements that all personnel have a badge? And we set that up so if you're allowed to be on two, you can you can go to two. And if you're only supposed to be on three, only supposed to be on three, why can't you be on three?
We certainly could do that. We can provide an access control system that ties into the elevator, so that you are only granted access based on your FOB to specific floors or areas of the building. So that's certainly something we can do.
Just to follow up on the elevator question, in an effort to explore all possibilities, we did actually, within the last couple of weeks, working with Matt and Commissioner Moody, we explored whether or not an elevator would need to be put in the building because of sort of that point. If public space was not allowed on, we'll say, even the second floor, if the public was not allowed there, would we have to put in an elevator? And at the end of the day, and we tried, because we were really doing exercise in terms of, you know, cost savings and things like that, there's no legal mechanism that allows us not to put an elevator in the building. So we thought that there were a few provisions, but all of that shook out, and it is Commissioner Moody's opinion. And again, I want to thank him for the thoroughness that he put into it. We could certainly do what you're talking about, but an elevator would be required to go into this facility.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to make one comment. I agree with what Todd said. The beauty of the site was that it was large enough that we could put a police station there, too, at some point in the future. But, so I really think Plan B is the better plan, just so that we could, in the future, have some room to put another building in.
I agree with that as well. I know the voters will have their say on approval, but I think it is foolish for us to present an option that doesn't allow the growth of the community. So I think as a board, I don't know if we need to vote on it, or...
There is a request for a potential vote, so if there's a motion, I'm happy to entertain.
I would make a motion that we recommend proceeding with Option B as outlined for potential growth in the future.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The chair is yes as well.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Five A.
Seven A.
Make a motion, we take up Agenda Item 7A.
We'll come back to you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair is yes as well. All right. The gentleman from Patrick Motors, if you're ready to come up.
Hours ago.
So could you please state your name, and then just, I know you've been here a few times, just kind of detail what this request is.
My name's J.D. Darty Dixon. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Patrick Motor Group. When you were kind enough to issue the licenses, and we checked our clericalness, we had a clerical error. Our licensed DBA for the town is Patrick Volkswagen Auburn. What was passed as an approval by the board was to have our license read Patrick's Motor Mart LLC DBA Patrick Motors. That is no longer the name of the company, and that was a clerical error on our side.
So are you looking for us to amend the license?
Yes, we'd like the license amended.
Patrick Volkswagen Auburn.
Auburn, which is in compliance with our business certificate issued by the town.
Does anybody have any questions?
Very sorry about this, it's quite embarrassing.
So I'll make a motion that we approve an amended license that will change the name from Patrick Motors Mart LLC DBA Patrick Motors to Patrick Motors, Patrick's Motor Mart LLC DBA Patrick Volkswagen Auburn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair is yes as well. And then there's a second request.
Second request is to Patrick Motor Group LLC owns all four dealerships, and we are going to, we have changed the focus of Mark Street. We're going to use that as a multi-purpose building, where we're going to be storing things more than anything. But there will be, from time to time, minor repairs done there, and we would like to operate it under the joint name, underneath the name of the parent company.
Do board members have questions?
I do.
By all means.
So you went to the planning board, you got an approval, under what condition? Are you doing anything in the building that contradicts the planning board approval?
No, at this time, the only thing that that building is being used for is detailing some cars here and there and storing vehicles.
Expanding the use, you're not doing that.
At this time, we are not expanding the use. At some point in the future, we are having discussions, but there's a lot more that we have to do and prepare for before we would even think to ask for permission to expand. There'd be some EPA issues we have to get licensing with and such, and we will not be doing anything more than storing cars and washing a few cars at that location. Absolutely, sir.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Motion that we amend the license as presented on our sheet here.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair is a yes as well. Okay.
Thank you very much. Sorry to have wasted your time with us.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Yeah, I was just going to ask. So can we go back to 5A?
We would.
We would go back to 5A, yes. Okay, so the other departmental items, there's a request to amend the ARPA allocation.
Good time, chief.
Exactly.
Welcome back.
Quick break. Welcome back.
So I just wanted to bring attention to the board of an issue that I'm having relative to fire overtime. I don't know if it was last week or the week before, I went before the Finance Committee for a transfer. I've had a situation since July 1, where I've found myself, in the 13 years that I've been the chief, I've only been in this situation one other time, where I had somewhat of what I'll call an employee Armageddon, in the sense that from July 1 until January 1, I had a total of nine employees that were out of work for an array of reasons. Paternity leave, injured off-duty, injured on-duty, an administrative leave, someone in the fire academy, that were out for a period of time. Coupled with, beginning shortly after July until November, I had four resignations within the department, as well as a retirement. So on top of the nine people who were out for various reasons, it coupled that there were 13 people over the course of that time that were out of work. So it caused more overtime than normal. And so I went to the board, and creatively, and I think we've, I think we're pretty close to closing the gap. When I went to the Finance Committee with the first transfer, I knew that I had a sum of money internally as well from those vacancies that were created, but I wasn't prepared to do a transfer that night, because I needed time for the town accountant to make sure that all of the encumbrances were correct before we had a dollar amount that we can transfer. So on the 30th, I know what that encumbrance number is, I'll be transferring the balance of those remaining salaries to kind of close the gap. But I, we still anticipate that we're going to have a shortfall. So in conversation with the town manager, one of the thoughts that we had was, as you were aware, on previous occasions, the board approved ARPA money for the impact shifts. For various reasons, over the period of that time, people not, and I know this was a concern of Mr. Carpenter, that people weren't forced to take, you know, these shifts. So over the period of time, there's a balance of somewhere around $50,000 of money that you had already previously approved for the impact shifts that was not spent prior to the October 31 deadline that you put on the ARPA funds. So we thought that we would bring it before the board and ask if there was any stomach for the board to allow the $50,000 that had already been previously approved for the impact shifts to be used to close a portion of that overtime gap, or not. Again, it's for the purpose of closing the overtime, but that $50,000 was there. So we figured that we would bring it before the board and ask for that consideration. I don't know if the manager has anything that he wants to say, but...
Yeah, to the board, to the chair, when I first was made known of this potential shortfall that has been estimated, you know, upwards of $200,000, I had some concerns, because I knew that would drain whatever reserves we carry in the general fund operating budget, and really put us behind the eight ball early in the fiscal year. We're only six months in, seventh month, and I had some concerns about that. So we suggested, I suggested to Steve, that we consider utilizing the impact shift money, which was used for overtime anyway, for general fund operating expenditures, that we asked the board to consider using that to close the gap. So like the chief said, this is a situation he has not seen, it's just a collision of things that normally does not happen during the year. It's an event hopefully we don't have to go through again. We will look at the overtime value as it exists currently, as we begin to review his budget for FY '25. So that's basically my position on the matter.
Do board members have any questions?
Yeah, how much did we allocate for the, from the ARPA funds for the impact shifts?
Yeah, there was, I want to say the total was somewhere, was it 80,000, Deputy? I think it was 80,000 for a defined period of time, and that was probably overestimated a little bit by a few weeks, you know, in terms of heavy. And only 30 of that remained, because remember, it was, you closed a gap between, I think, the end of August until the town meeting, so it was a definitive October 31. So that money was not expended, all of those shifts were not filled. So that's where the remaining balance came from.
Madam Chair, through you to the town manager, how much is remaining in the ARPA account, and what is it programmed to be used for or potentially used for?
So currently, without this, this 50 has already been committed for the impact shift, so I'm not counting that as going back as available at this point. Approximately 1.8 million. Now, we have the Siemens engineering study, and I'm working with Joe Fein at the school department. That report was presented to the board, and it does an assessment of our HVAC needs in several public buildings. We prioritize that, and we are trying to get estimates through General Mechanical as a basis of what we can put out to bid, that would utilize a good portion of those remaining balance of the ARPA funds, Mr. Kure. So I know there are other needs out there, we've talked about that, but we had an amount we wanted to set aside to address our HVAC needs that is already programmed in the CIP that would result in savings to the taxpayers by not borrowing or by not using general fund revenues to get those projects completed.
Do we have an idea if that 1.8 is enough to cover that, or...
No, it would not be enough. In my professional opinion, that would not be enough to satisfy the needs for those, for that entire study.
And have any other departments come to you looking for additional funding for programming that ARPA may or may not be a good source for?
The only one that came to mind, I think we presented this to the board early on, it was part of the original consideration, with those discounted fees for summer camp program kits. The board voted, I believe, $20,000 initially, it was used in year one. But there may be consideration for a utilization of a sum of money for that purpose as well.
Are there any additional questions?
Where would the money come from if we say no?
That's a conversation I would have to have with the manager. We identified a couple of different sources. I mean, I already have a budget freeze within the operation. The transfer that I made at finance, I canceled all training for the remainder of the year, so I closed out the training budget. So I've already made all of the internal cuts that I could make. It would really, that would be a question for the manager and the CFO, I would have to work with them to see where it would come from.
Certainly, there is an adequate balance in the reserve account, but I would not want to request a transfer out of that and drain that at this point in time. So we did have a department head meeting. At the time, we didn't know the impact of the 9C cuts, certainly that did not hit general fund revenues, which is a good thing. But there's still another gap between the 375 that the governor cut and the expected $725 million shortfall projected to the end of the year. So there may be some additional cuts coming. All the more reason not to take it out of the reserve, because I'm concerned about what impacts that may have. That being said, we did talk about a potential freeze on spending. We talked about not filling positions as a result of a way to come up with savings. I wasn't prepared to make that decision at this point in time, because I wanted to see what the impacts were in the 9C cuts. But that's something we may have to consider, all depending on the outcome of tonight's request.
I can follow up. So if we vote the 50, you don't have to, you can still do training, you can do the things, no? So we're losing it either way.
Correct. 50,000, and even with the 50,000, we anticipate that we're still going to have a shortfall, but it's going to, it's going to help close that shortfall. Either way, my spending freezes on, I've made every possible transfer I can make out of the department. So even with this 50, the training for the remainder of the year is gone, all of those things are gone. So I've exercised every option I have internally. This 50,000 just helps continue, it just helps kind of close that gap and shrink that, that if we did have to go to the reserve, it's a lesser amount that we're pulling from the reserve.
I am concerned that we're not maintaining training. How much money are we really talking about here? Nobody's got a huge training budget that I've ever seen in any department outside maybe the school department.
So I'm going to, you know, it's a great point, Mr. Carpenter, I'm going to say the same exact thing that I said to the Finance Committee. I can't, in good conscience, come to the Finance Committee or to the town management asking for money from the reserve, or wherever that may come from, without me looking internally and making tough decisions in terms of the budget, before I ask for it to come from other sources. So I know, I can tell you that Mr. Kennedy, the chairman of the finance, echoed the same exact thing that you just said, he was concerned about that. I'm not going to sit here and say that I'm not concerned about it, too. But at the end of the day, I just, I feel that I can't come and ask for money from other sources unless I've looked internally first and made tough decisions that may, even if those impact the operation, I feel that's my responsibility as well.
Yeah, I think this is where the political actually has something to say about it, versus, I would agree with you more that this is a political decision on our part than me telling you how many stories and whatever.
So, Madam Chair, if I can follow up on Mr. Carpenter's point, how much was your training budget that got cut?
I transferred $27,000 from training to the overtime line.
So I'm just going to spitball... So I'm just gonna spitball here to my fellow board members. The town manager knows that one of the priorities for me was those scholarships to the parks. It was supposed to be a multi-year. It got used up in year one. I believe it was supposed to be two or three years. There's a clear demand for that. I've had several residents reach out to me about that. There's the 50,000 that is needed or would help close the gap with this. And I share Mr. Kennedy's and Mr. Carpenter's concern about canceling of training, which is not just professional development training for the fire department. It's usually life, life and death, best techniques training that not only keeps your personnel safe, but keeps us residents safe. Since the HVAC, it far exceeds the 1.8 million that we have. I'd like to see this board make the political decision that Mr. Carpenter is talking about and allocate out of that 1.8, the 50, which I guess is already allocated out, to be used to. So, so I would, I would like to see us not only allocate the 50,000 to cover this gap, but to restore out of the ARPA money, the 27K for your training, as well as 20,000 to cover park scholarships for the next two years to get used in one year. So be it because the demand is so high. But I don't think that that's gonna drain the 1.8 and stop an HVAC projects from moving forward, but it's a way for us to use this money, which we all know is limited, which has already been clawed back on the federal level, which we've already heard, you know, Congressman McGovern and others warning municipal leaders, sat in those meetings, to use this money because it may not be there in future years.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, no worries. I think we got an open meeting law violation coming. I'm gonna have to do that training again, aren't I? To allocate this money, which is by my math, 97,000 out of the 1.8 plus the 50. So 97,000 total to cover those three priorities. That's a political decision that I'm prepared to make tonight.
May I ask the chief? Is this overtime gap gonna shrink or is it gonna continue sustain? I know we've hired additional firefighters. I believe you're still looking to hire some more. What are we expecting to close out the year?
Yeah, so great question. So I currently still have one vacancy within the department. We have brought some additional people on as of recent. Some of those new employees are not able to count towards the total complement because they, they just, they have to, they're too new. Now, we're fortunate that two of the recent members that we just brought on were career firefighters in other places. So we anticipate their training curve is gonna be a lot less. We've already talked about cutting them loose a little earlier than, than normal because of their experience. But there are a couple that we're not going to be able to do that for. So technically, I have one vacancy. And then, as you know, the town meeting approved the hiring of four firefighters for January 1st. I've deferred those hirings, you know, not necessarily due to this, but because of this, it sort of makes sense. I've deferred those hirings until April 8th at the moment because honestly, by the time, I'm working, not to belabor a point, I'm working with another issue with the retirement board, and I have a meeting with the retirement board on the 30th. So I intentionally held off on those hirings because I need the retirement board to answer a question for me. So I intentionally held off on those. But realistically, we have those positions advertised now. By the time we interview and background and all of those things, realistically, they're not gonna start until April 8th anyway. And then those positions will certainly help, you know, kind of stop the bleeding on the overtime. You know, it's like I said to the finance committee, you know, this is, this is just like an unprecedented collision that, that came together. This isn't more overtime hours. It's more overtime hours than normal, but we know why because of the vacancy. You know, historically, we have the same amount of overtime hours kind of statistically every year. This is just, this, you know, so I don't anticipate unless I lose 13 more employees next fiscal year for a period of time. I don't expect this to happen. We're budgeted for overtime. But most of those employees, like I said, I still have the one vacancy, but all but two of those nine members are back to work. We do have, we do have two firefighters starting the academy, one in February, one in April. But the majority of that nine, all but two are back to work. So we're already in the process of stopping the bleeding. It's just trying to catch up from the first six months that hit us hard.
So I did not vote to use the ARPA funds the last time. I did not vote in favor for it. I am willing, again, I think Mr. Crane put forth a good use of the funds. It does not fix the problem. That's the sad reality. But if you're telling me that that gap is narrowing on its own, then I would be in favor of that. And I do just want to clarify, Mr. Crane, you were saying for the summer camp funds, is that what you were talking about for the discounted rates?
Correct, yes. So this board predating me had allocated $20,000 to go towards providing discounted rates for programs for the park and rec department. And the initial vote imagined that that would be spread over two years. Due to the demand, that 20,000 was allocated completely in year one. So this past year, there were families who attempted to apply that needed that financial assistance, but no financial assistance existed because it had been used up. So, so my, my proposal, my recommendation is not just the 50,000 to cover this gap that is already allocated, but the additional 27,000 to restore the training budget for the fire department out of ARPA funds, and then the $20,000 to sort of refill the account for the park department's discounted camp rates over two years. Might get used up in one year, but you know, over the next two years, which is a total of $97,000.
I'm concerned procedurally that we don't have that called out here. So I would be willing, if the other board members request to take that unallocated, we're assuming $50,000. I don't know the exact dollar amount. But if I said unallocated amount for the impact shifts, and we could use that for the overtime fund, does that satisfy the, the need for this request? And we can certainly take up the other.
So can that be put on the agenda for next week?
Yes, I think that's a great idea. I think we should look at this as a standalone item. That'll give us time to kind of regroup. I know this is, will carry us through for some period of time. I think the training piece needs to be acted on sooner than later. But I think this, in conjunction with what the finance committee approved, is gonna carry that OT line down the line quite a bit.
Yes, in addition to a $75,000 transfer that I'll be making on the 30th. So that coupled with the 50, coupled with the previous transfer, it's gonna get us a few months down the road.
So can I just confirm that on the next meeting, which I believe is Monday, we will have on the agenda an allocation of ARPA funds for $27,000 to restore the training for the fire department, as well as $20,000 to restore the, the account for the parks' scholarships or reduced fees, whatever they call it.
After your next scheduled meeting, I know there's an item for you to consider whether you want to meet on the, on next Monday or not, but absolutely, yep.
Question, when do we have to use this ARPA money by?
I believe December of 2026, but I think it has to be committed by 20, by the fall of '24.
And is any of this training mandatory in order for your firefighters to keep certain licenses?
The mandatory training was not cut. This $27,000, and that's typically what I'm budgeted, allows each firefighter eight hours of training a year that they can utilize to attend the fire academy, attend certain classes. I know the captains typically like to get them together as a group and get them sort of to all agree that, hey, we're gonna use the training to get together off duty as a group so we can train as a company off duty. So they have, we budget eight hours of training annually for them to use sort of as they see fit for the different trainings that they want to attend. All of the mandatory training that they're required to have is in a separate line item, and that was unaffected.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion on the unallocated ARPA funds?
Make a motion that we amend the ARPA allocation for impact shifts to fire overtime in the amount of $50,000.
Is there a second?
I would amend, so again, do we limit it to the 50,000? I don't know what the exact, I think that was a rounded estimate.
It's a rounded estimate. I, I do not know what the exact amount. It is around $50,000, and it might be 50 and some change. I don't know.
That's my concern is if we put the.
Can we amend your motion?
Well, we need a dollar amount, so we can't just say, I mean, we can say 1.8 million if you really go for.
Listen, I, I, in order to be clear, I would suggest, because we're bringing in the other two at your next meeting, we can bring this back in with a dollar amount specific.
If that works for everybody.
Well, we don't need to.
I think Mr. Carpenter is withdrawing the motion because it's gonna go on the agenda with the exact dollar amount at the next meeting.
Oh, I thought they needed that in order to do the transfer. So you'll have full accounting for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your consideration. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too, chief.
So we're moving to number six in the agenda. We do not have any communications. So that brings us to 7B proclamations and recognitions. In your packet, we have a request for a proclamation for Accessible Home Healthcare Agency in Auburn. Excuse me. They are celebrating their fifth year in business. Is there anybody from Accessible Home Healthcare here? Okay.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we issue a proclamation to Accessible Home Healthcare in celebration for their fifth anniversary.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Moving along to 7C, we have gift, gift acceptances. It doesn't appear we have any in our packet. So I'm going to move along to 8A in the town manager items.
Madam Chair, just two quick items. I just wanted to inform the board, they're commencing on April, in April, your fifth, the fifth Monday of April, which would be meeting number three on April 29th. We are gonna begin to present to the board an operational update of various departments. And I notified them last week at a department heads meeting that this was a desire of the board. So that's gonna commence at least, we'd like to get two, two departments in on every quarter to give the board an update on what's going on within their department.
Thank you. Do board members have questions?
Did we vote on this? I don't ever recall this even becoming an item.
I don't think we voted on it. I know several of us who did. I would, I believe that several of us had mentioned it when we were putting together our goals or our priorities for the town, for the town manager. I know I did. If I remember right, I believe Mr. Chambers did as well.
And again, the updates, I think, will just help inform us. And then it also gives them an opportunity to let us know some of the challenges that they're facing. So when we're setting some priorities, we can assist everyone in helping the town, so.
Yes, I like the idea. When we say the board, that means that there's a vote of this committee, a vote. So we, we want to be careful with our language because I hear it a lot, and you can all give me the eye and wish me dead, but the board didn't request it. We can request it, and I think it's a great idea, but we just have to be very careful when, when people say board, that means a vote of this board has been taken, and that has not happened. But I would make a motion that we follow through with this as presented by the town manager, because I think it's an excellent idea.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Okay.
And Madam Chair, item B, just a reminder to the board that my one year serving as town manager is approaching. And in accordance with the, the evaluation policy, I want to let the board know that I'm gonna submit my self-evaluation to the board by February 21st or sooner in accordance with the policy, and that would then commence a process for the board to evaluate me. So I just wanted to give the board a, a heads up that we are approaching those, those calendar requirements.
Can I just mention that we missed a vote, a potential vote under 8A? The discussion and vote on meeting the fifth Monday in January, January 29, 2024.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So we do have a third Monday coming up in January, and it has been, the board has, is an optional meeting. But I do think there are some agenda items that are gonna come up before that time. Is everybody available for a meeting on the 29th?
So, yes, I'm available, and I'll make a motion that we meet on Monday, January 29, 2024.
Is there a second?
Oh, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Okay, so are you all set with 8B as well?
I'm all set.
Okay. So moving along to number nine, we have no table items. Number 10, we have a member item, the flag policy discussion and potential vote to confirm the policy.
Madam Chair, if I recall correctly, it's nine o'clock. These residents have been sitting here. We can certainly, if it's all right with the board, carry that over to next week. I don't think it's urgent, but I would rather hear from the public than.
I don't, is there any discussion?
Exactly. Rather than delay it, can I just make a motion that we move up item 11, public comments?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So we're moving up public comments. And Charles Sweden, Sweden? Sweden? I'm so sorry, I probably missed Sweden. Okay. Would you like to come up? You can come up and sit if that's easier or the podium. And please give us your name and address and your, your comment.
I live at 751 Washington Street here in Auburn, the American Mobile Home Park. Here on behalf of my fellow residents.
This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry about that.
So sorry.
An organization called the Lawyers for Civil Rights has submitted a letter to you folks regarding an exorbitant rent hike that would, to the park, that would evict veterans, elderly people and folks on fixed incomes. And so I'm just here to urge the board to move as swiftly as possible to enact some rent control in Auburn.
Thank you for your comment. I can tell you that I received the email, as did. I can tell you that I received the email, as did the town, and it is something that we are looking into, that we have to do some research on it first.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So, Madam Chair, can I just ask through you to the Town Manager? Are we having Town Council look at that letter? Look at the, the requests in the letter for a creation of a rent control board as releasing mobile homes and the legality of that to provide us the legal advice on whether we can even act?
Yes, I, I could tell you, I received a letter late last week, and for reasons, I, I wasn't able to, I wanted to do a little research on it before I called Town Council to see what options were available, whose decision that is, and whether it's specific to mobile home park units or whether it's broader based, whether it's a wider net and it covers other rental properties. But that's something we're taking a look into. We will have a conversation with Town Council, provided the board has no objections.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for not standing up at the beginning.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Thought somebody else was gonna...
No apologies.
Watch this, your step there, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move back to the flag policy discussion.
Okay, thank you.
In your packets, there is the flag policy that was adopted. I think Mr. Carpenter is looking for a confirmation vote on the policy. Does anybody have any questions? Or comments?
No, my reason for asking for this, and I know the chair mentioned she didn't have an issue with it, I don't have an issue with it. I just feel that it's good policy that we, if there is an emergency and we need to vote a policy, that's great. And I'll say again, I don't think that this matched that, but we voted. We should then bring it back and ask that member and see what their opinion is, whether they think it's great or not. I just think it's a good practice for members because while none of us may particularly be interested in it, someone, a new person might be.
Sure. I, since I was the member that was missing when this was, I actually don't have any objections to this policy, but I'm happy to entertain a motion for a confirmation.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.